Good evening, welcome to the fourth meeting of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland. It is six P M. I will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman DeWalt?
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Mills?
Here.
Councilwoman Clark?
Here.
President Cole?
Here.
Mayor Sidney?
Here.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is the report of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we'll start with Councilman DeWalt.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple things. Last Saturday, we had our, in Old Town, we had our last Epiphany Party. And it was more than what Clayton and Diego's house could handle. There was people packed in there. And it was great seeing everybody and talking over some politics and some things going on in the neighborhood and all that. And that's about it. And I wish everybody well. And please, when you drive through this city of Laurel, obey the speed limit signs and go, at least go through our neighborhoods slow at twenty-five mile per hour and watch the kids that are outside playing. And the pets that roam our neighborhoods. So please, please be cognizant of that and do the speed limit through our school zones, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Next, we'll go to Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Council President. Since our last meeting held on January twenty-second, I participated in the Laurel Community Town Hall. We had a wonderful leadership retreat together. Also, we have had an Environmental Affairs Committee meeting. Just a reminder that the public is invited to attend for the public hearing portion. Our official meetings are held on the second Tuesday bimonthly. I would like to again express my deepest condolences to Councilmember Jeffrey Mills, who I shared Ward One with, Ward Two with, his sister and their family on the loss of their mother recently. The services in Williamsburg were a true celebration of a life well-lived. Many spoke of Mrs. Mills as a mighty woman and supporter of her church, filled with strong faith and a sweet spirit. I will keep your family in my thoughts and prayers. Also, congratulations to Ward Two's business owner of Mr. Smith's Barber Studio, located at three eight-six Montrose Avenue, on serving the Laurel community for over twenty-four years. The mayor and I congratulated the entire team and participated in their event this weekend. Thank you to everyone who came to the Black History Celebration this weekend on Saturday. We had so much fun and there were so many people that the lights went out at the center. The line was out the door. The vendors were extremely excited. So we're going to reschedule that. I will follow up on my social media page and you'll also see it on the City of Laurel's page as well, on the rescheduled date in March. But thank you to all the vendors. Thank you to everyone that came out, and I look forward to seeing you at the next one. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Mills?
All right, thank you, thank you. Mr. President, a few things here going back since our last meeting. We have, since January first, well, the first thing, January twenty-third, I attended the MLK Junior, Martin Luther King Junior Middle School for their winter fine art showcase. January twenty-fifth, I talked with several students from Laurel High School that were hanging out at Cambridge Circle skipping school. I want to put a pause there real quick. And we know that this is an ongoing occurrence. And they hang out in the neighborhoods and they hang out down at the shopping centers. And you know, my dad said, "Son, when you see a problem, that means you had a problem to solve the problem." And so, and I remember there was a meeting when I was running for council. And the police, Laurel Police, said that they actually could not do anything pertaining to these children. But us as community leaders, us as citizens, and those who are looking within the community, we're grown adults and we have a responsibility. Yes, they're not, they may not be your children, but they are our children. And they, these are our leaders. And so, we see the problem, so try to solve the problem by giving the word of advice. If you feared, if you feared the children, then that's kind of conflicting the fact of you saying that you fear God. Because don't put no one above he. On February ninth, no, I'm sorry, February, wait a minute, let me go back. Okay, yes. So on, on that same day, I attended, at five-thirty P M., I attended the Sustainability Meeting at the Robert J. DePietro Center. Seven P M. that same, that same day, I attended the Mayor and City Council Town Meeting at the Municipal Building. That was a great event. That was a great event. And I hope we continue to do more of those. On January twenty-sixth, I, I went to the Hyattsville Courthouse to fight a ticket that I received on Fourth and Main Street. There was, so I actually parked my van, I parked my van right at Fourth and Main, fifteen feet away from the fire extinguisher where the curb is painted red. And I, and my vehicle still received the ticket. I put my van there intentionally because I wanted to know the law of what the, what the judge would say about this situation. There was a sign there at this very moment. At right now, when you, soon as you turn down Fourth Street, right off of Main Street, there, on the left-hand side, there is two signs that point to each other that says, "No parking." Then on the, across the street where the fire hydrant is, it has the curb painted red. And there's a, there's a sign that says, "No parking" there. But there's no park, there's no sign here at the top of the street. And the, the attendant is still giving people tickets there. And the director, I think it was Tim, said that there should be a sign there. And so, so I took that to court to see what the judge was going to say about that. And the judge actually said that he threw it out because it was unclear. And so, that's a problem that we need to have resolved. Besides just giving our constituents tickets unjustly when we know that there should be a sign there. All right? And okay, and on the, on January, on January twenty-sixth, oh, I'm sorry, on January twenty-seventh, I, I was at the Laurel Municipal Leadership Retreat. And that was, that was a great treat. I'm glad that the mayor had this idea to do such. But then that day turned horribly bad for me. That was, I received a phone call that I needed to go get to the hospital because my mother passed that day. And I really appreciate the city to, you know, send their condolences, flowers. Kind of clog, I really appreciate you attending, coming out to Williamsburg and helping us celebrate my mom's life. February first, the, February first was the first day of Black History Month. I sent, I spent my time with my son out at the People's Focus Group, a part of our Sustainability Group at the, at the Petro Center. I brought my son out because he had some ideas. He's eleven years old. And they really appreciated his ideas. And we have, we have to, we have to involve the youth in our, in our ongoing meetings. February seventh, I attended the swearing-in of the officer at the Municipal Building, three P M. that day. February ninth was Seniors Day at the Selborn House and Morning Side House of Laurel. I attended this luncheon with Councilman DeWalt, former council member Mitchell, and Congressman David Trone. And we, we spent that time feeding the seniors as well. And then February tenth, Community Meeting at the Boys and Girls Club with Congressman Trone. And that event was, had a pretty good turnout as well. And and last, today, myself, Councilwoman Clark and myself, we met with Russ Shipley Esquire and John Ferente Arago about their ideas for mixed-use M X T property development plans. And that concludes my, my, my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Johnson?
Good evening, Council President, Councilmembers. Excuse my voice. I have a few things to share, but I will try to be as quick as possible and hopefully you can hear me. On Tuesday, January twenty-third, I attended my first clergy advisory council meeting, where we received an update from the Police Chief and the Directors, Chrissy Cornwell and Bill Bailey, and Marcel LeBlanc shared information about the Multi-Service Center. Also, on Tuesday, January twenty-second, twenty-third, I'm sorry, I attended the Laurel Board of Trade Small Business Roundtable, where the small business owners heard from the mayor and the directors of the departments which in the, within the city that they may encounter. They also had time for networking, so it was a really well-attended event. Looking forward to that next year. Thursday, January the twenty-fifth, was the mayor's first town hall, where we received and collected feedback from citizens. And like Councilman Mills said, I think it was a good idea. We had a chance to revisit those ideas during the leadership retreat, which was held the next Saturday, the twenty-seventh. And we took those concerns from the citizens and distributed them to the appropriate departments for follow-up. So I look forward to, and I believe the citizens will look forward to us, you know, following up on that. Because what it will do is show that we are, you know, proactive and following through, saying that we will do what we said we will do. So I think that will be good for the community to see and for us to do. And I am letting you know if there's any assistance needed, you know, getting that together. I know we told them about a month. But if you need help, I'm available to get that report together. A lot of information was shared during the leadership retreat, but something that stood out to me that I just wanted to highlight was the session about management, where we talked about bifocal leadership, effective leadership, and effective communication. And I think that's good for us, you know, as a new council and new administrative team that we start on the same page with the mayor's vision for leadership and management. And I think it'll be beneficial for us moving forward. So we'll have that blueprint of that thing to look forward to as we move forward, to, to we stay on the same page. On February the eighth, the Laurel, I attended the Laurel Historical Society Black History Month webinar. It was a good event where we heard from the panelists, Mayor Sidney, Councilwoman Valerie Nicholas, and Councilman Fred Smalls, where they discussed the African-American voting experience in Laurel, Maryland. I think it was very good to just hear their different perspectives of where they started and where they are. It was good for them to share that. And then also, on Saturday, February the tenth, I attended Councilwoman Clark's Black History Program. Really, really looking forward to it. Can't wait till you reschedule. I just wanted to share some upcoming events. So tomorrow, we're doing the African-American reading celebration, where we're reading to the students at Laurel Elementary School. Then the Laurel Museum's newest exhibit, which started with the webinar, will be Visions and Voices nineteen twenty through twenty twenty-three, the African-American Voting Experience in Laurel, Maryland. And it celebrates Mayor Sidney's and others' electoral accomplishments, explores some of the highlights and perspectives of African-Americans who ran for office. And the museum is open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, twelve to four, and it is pre-admission. So I think we should all, you know, take advantage of it. It gives us a lot of time. It's running for a couple of months. We look forward to Laurel Eats Restaurant Week, February seventeen through twenty-fourth. Hope I don't get any weight, but looking forward to participating in that. And lastly, like to remind you all about the Women's History Program. We'll be hosting at the Multi-Service Center on Saturday, March the ninth, from ten to two. We'll be celebrating those who advocate for equity, diversity, and inclusion in the arts, business, education, government, and philanthropy. We will have dynamic speakers, captivating entertainment, interactive activities, and there'll be a networking reception for all attendees. There are flyers available in English and Spanish on the city's website and being distributed during, via social media. We do ask that those who are interested in attending to register, so there is an event right link. And if there's anyone in the community who has concerns that they don't want to bring their kids for that entire event, we will have childcare and activities for children available, and there will be volunteer activities available also. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'll give my report next. I did want to congratulate the chief. On February first, I attended the Laurel Police Department Year in Review. It was very thorough. I believe we are looking at some upcoming recordings of that presentation, maybe a bit condensed. Hearing just trends in the, in the region compared to the city of Laurel and how we were doing was very enlightening, even as a council member. I encourage everyone in the public to look at our past year in review. February fourth, I attended the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department Auxiliary Breakfast. That's held the first Sunday of every month. On the fifth, we had a Laurel Pride Day meeting for Pride this coming October. I did want to congratulate the city and Councilwoman Clark for the success that they had, even in the dark. All the vendors were very happy and want to come back to the next event. So I thought that was a very good turnout. We, I have received several inquiries about increased trash throughout the city and specifically on Main Street. I've been working with the Administration. Department of Public Works is currently on winter activity schedule, but with no snow, they are modifying this to increase street sweeping and public trash receptacle emptying. So look for that to happen in the coming weeks. Hopefully, we can reduce the amount of trash. Parks and Recreation does have trash cleanup kits for those that would like to sign them out and organize a trash cleanup through the city. Upcoming meetings for committees that I sit on, the Historic District Commission will meet tomorrow night at six P M. via Zoom. And then next week, on the twentieth, the Planning Commission will meet via Zoom at six P M. The only agenda item is an amended site and landscape plan for the community clubhouse at Patuxent Greens. And that concludes my report. Next, we will go to Mayor Sidney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I pay my condolences to the following staff members who lost their parents. Recently, condolences to Christine Phillips, other of our Fire Marshal Service Office, who passed off her mother. Condolence as well to Councilman Mills for the passing of his mother. And condolences to Dan Jawoski, D P W., passing of his father. Condolence go to those family members. And the city is here to help you guys out. If you need any more support, please reach out to us as well. I attended a clergy meeting on January twenty-third. Also, I met the Laurel Historic Society on January twenty-third. On January twenty-fourth, excuse me, I didn't make that meeting. On January twenty-fifth, we met with the Chief of Tiffany Green, Fire Marshal, I mean, the Fire Chief of Prince George County. It was a very interesting meeting. There's a lot of stuff going back and forth with the volunteer firefighters and career firefighters. Station ten will be a career fire station, but the volunteer firefighters will be able to work out there. Chief Green assured me that the volunteers can work out there. I met with the President of the Volunteer Fire Department, Bit Wilful, over the December. We had a long conversation. I told him that the city of Laurel was still continuing to support them as much as we can within our budget. We just know that both firefighters are very important to us in our community. And we just hope that the relationship between the career firefighters and volunteer fire departments can be very productive, because we both need both in this community. So anyone that wants to volunteer, save our community, we are giving them our respect as well. We also understand that people that do that for a living. So we hopefully can work out some type of arrangements and they can both still serve our community. But I just want the council to know that as well. And the community know that we do support the volunteer fire department, at least from my end. I know quite sure that fellow councilmen would do as well. So we hope that that relationship can be very productive. Also, we had a town hall meeting, as you know, Councilman mentioned already. We did have a retreat on the twenty-seventh. We did a lot of feedback from that retreat. Report should be out hopefully within the next month or so, sometime either early March or mid-March. But we had that report for the things that we talked about. Continuing, Mr. President, on February the first, we had a multi-service tour with Health and Human Services. Now, to give them a tour of our multi-purpose service center, that the things we're going to be offering there. The whole idea is to get community stake input from the state and from the local government as well, from various local governments, Howard County, Anaronda County, because this, my multi-purpose service center serves around the Laurel area. And so, the more input we have and stakeholders involved, because it's going to cost some money to finance this place. And the city don't want to put the bill by ourselves. But, so we have other organizations come in to look around and see the purpose of it, and I think it's going to be a good start for us. Thank you, Chief Hammond, for the town hall meeting with the Laurel Police Department to give our citizens input, regardless of things the police department is doing, the wonderful work you're doing, keeping our community safe. And giving our community prevention tips to stay safe as well. So continue the wonderful work that you're doing with that. February the third, you know, it's Black History Month, and I'm a member of the Hundred Black Men of Prince George County. And we took thirty-five mentees to the African-American Museum of Washington, D.C., and they was very impressed with that, learning their history, because our history is very important to all of us, not just Black history. I'll speak on that later in my report as well. February the fifth, I attended a Hope Baptist Church to speak to the scouts. I enjoy speaking, talking to young people. As y'all know, they're already, they had a lot of questions for me, man. I thought I was on a forum again. They was very prepared. They asked a lot of questions. I think I came prepared for them, though. But anytime they need me, I tell them I always come out and speak to the scouts. Once again, this is another important meeting I attended on the seventh of February, the Board of Trustees meetings, talking about our pensions. And what I did learn from that, I was going to share with the council, I mean, with you guys one-on-one, but I'll share it with you tonight as well. The pension, as you know, been, been around for a while. It's fully funded, really. It's in a good place. The police officers asked for a raise in their pension, and we know they're getting a thirteen check this month. But they can't continue to get a thirteen check. So there's going to have to be some legislation written to get, we want to give them a raise every year. Supposedly, meeting with F O P. leadership sometime this week. But the council do have that authority to, to give the pension retirees a raise. We can come up with legislation. We just got to find out how much we want to do it. But the point is, we have to make sure that we have enough money in our retirement that can last for us. We don't want to go bankrupt. What we have to do, we have to get analysis. The analysis got to come out of our general budget. It might cost us between twenty to thirty thousand dollars. We don't know that yet. Financial budget is going to give me a quote from the trustee is going to do it for us. So we're going to be looking for that, to put that money in the budget to give, see what it costs. And then we see whether we can give them one percent, half percent, hundred dollars, two hundred dollars. We don't know. But it's something that, you know, that we're going to be looking at, something that the actors will look at. I know that we had that question come up at the F O P. thing. So, but the most important thing is, I remind all the councilmen, I remind the F O P. as well, we want to make sure that we, you know, don't go bankrupt, whatever we do. So we got to be very careful with the legislation we write. Something we want to redo, it's going to do every year, you know. Whatever the case may be, we'll talk to the lawyers further. I just want to put that out there. That meeting was very important. So I'm going to hide any information from you, but you know, we can do, we can't do. And as you say, somebody always mentions swearing-in of Officer Josh Burford. He's a returning police officer of the Laurel Police Department. So welcome back here. February the eighth, also, I attended African-American voting experience with the Laurel Historic Society. Just asked those questions about our voting experience here, that African-Americans running for, in legislation. So it was real fun. As you know, Councilman Clark did an excellent job putting that program together. Unfortunately, though, transfer went out. And things by life sometimes, you can't predict what things are going to happen. But I think everybody was in good spirits. The citizens wasn't mad. They waited around for us to get it fixed. I want to thank Director Bailey for coming on the scene, the electricians as well. It was a team. I put, State Administrator was there to show the support that we have for our city. And so, hopefully, that we'll reschedule that. Probably won't be a Black History Program, but it'd be some type of program the Councilman Clark can put together before we can give those small businesses some exposure in this city. So thank the community for coming out. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your good spirits. We really appreciate that. Today, I attended a guaranteed income event at Howard University, just to learn more about it. You know, so it was very interesting. I had a lot of questions. My Lieutenant, Governor, former Lieutenant Governor Michael Steele was on the panel. He had a lot of input on that as well. So there's a lot of information on that. So we'll talk about that more later. So some announcements I want to make, Mr. President, I'm almost finished. Some announcements I want to make, Mr. President, on February the sixteenth, Bad Decision Tattoo Ribbon Cutting. So council members, you're available on February sixteenth on Main Street, Bad Decision Tattoo Ribbon Cutting. Had their grand opening there. So please show up if you're available. Someone mentioned this already before, February seventeenth to twenty-fourth is Laurel Restaurant Week. Want to thank Economic Development Department for putting this on. Hope we go out and support our local restaurants. If you want to be involved in that Restaurant Week, please contact Robert Love, Director Robert Love Shop to get a part of that. Monday, we're closed. President Day, we're closed Monday, February nineteenth. We're closing that day. And I'll make some reappointments to the various committees, and then I'll ask the council for confirmation to.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Actually, it looks like agenda item number four is approval of minutes, and then we'll go to your.
No problem. One way too fast. Okay. Well, let me close out with this right here, then, Mr. President, before I was going to that. As you know, Black History was started by Colley G. Woodson. Colley G. Woodson is a historian. He started Black History, Negro History Week in nineteen twenty-six. In nineteen seventy-six, President Gerald Ford made it, ex-Hall of America, the Zer Black History Month in February. And the reason Colley G. Woodson celebrated Black History Month in February because of two individuals, Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. Their birthdays both in February. As you know, Frederick Douglass is an abolitionist. He's here from the great state of Maryland. And Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation to free slave, free their slave people. So that's why Black History Month is celebrated in February. In order to celebrate Black history and really understand Black history, we've got to understand American history. So you really appreciate Black history once you really understand our history, because Black history is American history. Black history is world history. All go together. Unfortunately, though, we celebrate it because of the constitutions that African-Americans contribute to, to America. Some is not recognized. And so, we want to bring a light to that, because we was just more than just enslaved people. So Black history is American history. And once again, I echo that again. In order to understand Black history, you got to understand American history. You really appreciate it, once we really dig and dive into our history, because the truth will always set us free. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, agenda item number four is the approval of minutes for the January third, twenty twenty-four work session, the January eighth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, and the January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. Are there any amendments to the minutes as presented? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the January third meeting minutes, January eighth meeting minutes, and January twenty-second meeting minutes.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, agenda item number five is appointments from the mayor. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Now, I'm on key now, right? Okay, I want to make the reappointments and appointments to the following committees. Michael Maxwell to the Environment Affairs Committee, Nakia Cheeks to the Environment Affairs Committee, Alvin Alton to the June tenth Executive Committee. And I want to make the reappointments to the following committees. Frederick Cameron to the Mercy Service Commission, and Marlene Fraser, Historic District Commission. I'm asking the council for confirmation to the following individuals to those committees.
Mr. Mayor, I was looking at the agenda. I did not hear the reappointment, or the appointment of the co-chairwoman for the Juneteenth Committee. Is that still on tonight's agenda?
Sandra Shook should be the Chair of the Juneteenth Committee. If we can add that to the minutes. Madam Clerk, Sandra Shook to be the Chair of the Juneteenth Executive Committee.
I got it.
I will entertain a motion from the council.
I'll make a motion that we approve all the previously stated appointments to their respective committees.
Thank you, Councilman. And a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Agenda Item Number Six is General Public Hearing. I will open the General Public Hearing at six thirty P.M. Madam Clerk, is anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir. There's no one signed up to speak tonight.
With no one signed up to speak, I will close the General Public Hearing at six thirty P.M. Agenda Item Number Seven is Consideration of a Fleet Acquisition, twenty twenty-four M-two Freightliner, twenty-five-yard rear loader refuse truck. Department of Public Works, Tommy Helms, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sidnor, Council President Cole, and Laurel City Council Members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of a twenty twenty-four M-two Freightliner refuse truck. The department solicited quotes through Grand Turk of Baltimore and Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems of Easton. Of the two vendors contacted, Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems was the sole vendor that returned a quote for the specialized equipment. The accepted quote is from Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems of Easton, Maryland, who has a source well contract zero-nine, one-two, one-nine THC. Based on the fleet replacement schedule, the following equipment will be replaced. Vehicle twenty-two, a two thousand nine refuse truck, will be replaced with the new twenty twenty-four M-two Freightliner refuse truck. Vehicle twenty-two will be sold at auction. The funding is available through the adopted FY twenty-four CIP Fleet Replacement Project. The cost for this equipment is two hundred sixty-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. It is recommended that the purchase of this equipment be made from Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems of Easton, Maryland, for a total cost of two hundred sixty-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Thank you. This bid recommendation was heard at the February seventh Work Session. Are there any new comments on this bid recommendation? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I don't have any comments, but I'll make a motion that these, this fleet replacement vehicle by Mid-Atlantic for approximately two hundred sixty-seven thousand is approved.
Thank you, Councilman. And a second?
A second, Mr. President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Deloitte?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Agenda Item Number Eight is Considering of a Bid Recommendation for Engineering and Design Tool Award for Fourth and Fifth Street Renovations. Department of Public Works, Tommy Helms, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is the request approval for the design, surveying, bid package preparation, and administrative services to prepare plans and specifications for the milling. Bytuminous overlay repairs the concrete sidewalks, curb and gutter, and other items necessary to ensure safe travel for pedestrians and vehicles. The work shall include Fourth Street from Main to Gorman Avenue and Fifth Street from Main Street to Montgomery Street. The intersection of Prince George's Street with Fifth Street extending sixty-five feet onto Prince George Street. This is an ongoing project by the City of Laurel Department of Public Works. Repairing the streets, sidewalks, curb and gutter, and ensuring safe access for pedestrians and vehicles in the city right of way. The work will be performed by KCI Technologies Incorporated, who are one of the city's on-call engineering firms. It's recommended that the Mayor and City Council of Laurel approve this purchase from KCI Technologies Incorporated for a total of sixty-five thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars and zero cents. The work is tentatively scheduled to be completed and bid in the month of April twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. This bid recommendation was also discussed at the February seventh Work Session. Are there any new comments or questions for Department of Public Works? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to make just a small comment, and then I'll make the motion to accept it. As long as the engineering company on Fourth and Fifth Street, as long as they take a good look at these telephone poles that are blocking some of the access for handicap wheelchairs to get around those obstacles and doing their very best that I know, I know at times we're not going to be able to approach on anybody's property or get permission from people's property. But if they could do the best they can to maybe, excuse me, mitigate some of those areas for our handicapped citizens, it would be greatly appreciated. And I'll make a motion that we accept the engineering bid for Fourth Street, from Main Street to Fourth Street. Fourth Street from Main Street to Gorman Avenue and from Fifth Street, Main Street to Montgomery Street.
Thank you, Councilman Deloitte. And a second?
A second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Deloitte?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our last bid recommendation of the evening is a bid recommendation for Soul Source Purchase of Ongoing Replacement of Street Lighting Conversion to a hundred and fifty watt LED fixtures. Again, Tommy Helms of Public Works.
Thank you. This is to request the Soul Source Purchase, approval for the removal of sixty-five HID pendant light fixtures in the vicinity of Clubhouse Boulevard and Greenview Drive. The sixty-five fixtures will be placed, replaced with eighteen, one hundred fifty watt LED pendants and forty-seven, one hundred fifty watt LED colonial fixtures total. Mapping of the exact fixtures is in the scope of work are attached. This is an ongoing project by the City of Laurel Department of Public Works, reducing the number of high-pressure sodium and metal high-light streetlights in the city, which consume more energy and may last two to five years with longer-lasting twenty-five-year expected life with one hundred fifty watt LED fixtures. The work will be performed by BGE's Division of Outdoor Lighting. BGE is the public utility service provider for gas and electric services for the entire city of Laurel. It is recommended that the Mayor and City Council of Laurel approve this purchase from BGE and Excelon Company for a total of forty-nine thousand, one hundred eleven dollars and zero cents for improvement of energy savings and sustainability at these locations. Funding for this project is provided through the adopted FY twenty-four Capital Improvement Program Street Lighting Project.
Thank you, Tommy. This bid recommendation was also discussed at the February seventh Work Session. I know there were some questions, and I believe the administration has forwarded answers out to those questions about cost savings through conversion to LED. Are there any new comments or questions on this bid recommendation? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the purchase from BGE for the removal of sixty-five pendant light fixtures in the vicinity of Clubhouse Boulevard and Greenview Drive for a total of forty-nine thousand, one hundred eleven dollars for the improvement of energy savings and sustainability at these locations.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deloitte? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Deloitte?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Agenda Item Number Ten is Introduction and First Public Hearing of Ordinance Number twenty twenty-one. In ordinance amending the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and to provide an effective date. Director Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor Sidnor and council members. Ordinance twenty twenty-one is our second amendment to the FY twenty twenty-four General Operating Budget and CIP. Excuse me, on page two, you'll see that there's a transfer reflected from the Department of Communications to the Department of Information Technology for the purchase of an iPad. Bulk of the changes are on page three. In the Capital Improvement Program, we're reallocating funds from London Dairy Court and Fenwick Court, which were done by the HOA in accordance with the ownership of the streets after a correction was made by Mr. Miller of our Department of Public Works. And we're proposing to use that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund Park Avenue from Sixth to Eighth Streets, Morton Place, Virginia Manor Court, Stanley Place, and Fourth Street from Main Street to Gorman Avenue. So there's a net zero change in both operating and the capital improvement programs. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director Saylor. I will open the public hearing on ordinance number twenty twenty-one at six forty P.M. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mr. President.
With no one signed up to speak, I will close the general public hearing at six forty P.M. Are there any additional comments from the council?
I have a question for Michelle, please.
Go ahead, Councilman Deloitte.
Michelle, you mentioned in there, I heard you mention Park Avenue from Sixth to Eighth Street. When is, when is that, when is that information about what they're going to do there come out, or is it out already?
So that would have to be, this will provide the funding for the engineering. And then we will know better after we're able to, after this money's in place for Public Works to select the engineers and move forward with that, with that engineering. Anything else, I'd have to defer to Mr. Helms.
Okay, and the engineering firm hasn't been selected yet for that?
I'm not aware of the engineering firm yet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Helms, did you want to respond on that?
Yeah, the engineering firm, I do not have an answer right now, has not been chosen.
Yeah, just so you know, Tommy, I've been, I've been trying to get a crosswalk somewhere on Seventh Street so that families could cross from the neighborhoods to the library. And I know that Park Avenue, there's, you know, three or four places that we can, we can get, at least get a crosswalk, and maybe one of them raised crosswalks, which would slow down the traffic on Seventh Street, too. But at least get a crosswalk across there so the families could walk in the neighborhood and cross that, cross that area safely. Because we don't have any right now that they could safely cross the Seventh Street area. And, and I'm always pushing for that, and it would be nice to have an engineering if they're coming out there to do that to see if they could accommodate that in some way. Thank you very much.
Just to answer one thing, so there is a crosswalk in design at Carroll Avenue and Seventh right now that I just reviewed, so there will be, there will be one at Carroll in Seventh.
Oh, that's all. Thank you. That's awesome. That's awesome. That's even, that's even closer to the library.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, I have one question for Tommy, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Mills.
All right, so just, when, when the, when the, when the guys emptied the cans, you know, on Trash and Recycle Day, I had a request from constituents that can, that if they can start closing the can tops once they dump the cans?
Yes, of course. We, I can pass that along to the Waste Management Supervisor.
All right, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Councilman. I will remind the council that this is an ordinance, so it would require two public hearings. Unless the rules are suspended, is there an appetite from the council to suspend the rules for ordinance number twenty twenty-one tonight?
Mr. President, I motion to suspend the rules regarding ordinance number twenty twenty-one, allowing us, allowing us to approve it tonight since there will be only be one item on the agenda for February twenty-sixth, and this will ensure that the council, mayor, and staff's time is being used effectively and efficiently.
Thank you, Councilman. I have a motion. Do I have a second to suspend?
And I second that, Mr. President.
I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on ordinance number twenty twenty-one. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deloitte?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
With the rule suspended, I will now entertain a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
I motion to, Mr. President, I motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Deloitte. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deloitte?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Sidnor?
I concur.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Eleven is the Reappointment of Director, of James Cornwall Shield, Director, Department of Information and Technology. Mayor Sidnor, you have the floor.
Yeah, before I go any further, Mr. President, I got to take a personal privilege right fast. As you know, February twenty-sixth, there will not be a mayor city council meeting, but you still can reach out to your mayor city council. I encourage all citizens to download my Laurel Maryland app on your phone, Android phone, iPhone. That way, any issues you have in the city, you can report them directly, and they'll track it, get your tracking numbers. Once again, my Laurel Maryland app on your iPhone or your Android phone, you can contact us that way. Any trash, potholes, any discrepancies you see in the city, we prefer you use that Laurel app, that's what it's there for. But you also could email us, though, but you do use that Laurel, my Laurel Maryland app. It go directly to the department that you are making the concern for, so I really appreciate that. As you know, it's time to reappoint our directors of all the departments. And I appreciate the council for the confirmation on James Cornwall Shield. Director Shields has been with the city for a while. He started off as a, just a regular IT person doing the groundwork. He worked his way up to Assistant Director, and when Director Frost retired, Director Shield was the next person in line to continue the wonderful work you've been doing for the city. So I ask for confirmation from the council to, for Mr. Shield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any comments from the council pertaining to Director James Cornwall Shield? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve his reappointment.
I'll make a motion that we vote yes for James Cornwall Shield in his reappointment.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Deloitte?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Director Shield, would you like to make a few comments?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Sidnor, Council President Cole, Council Members Clark, Deloitte, Johnson, and Mills, for allowing me this opportunity to continue to serve the people of the City of Laurel as the Director of IT. I've loved this community since my family moved here in the early eighties. So my technology perspective is both from the point of view of a resident and a technology professional. So I want to take a moment to reassure you that my goal with every technology that we employ is to ensure that we hold the good of the community paramount. And also that we enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of city services and that we protect the safety and privacy of the people of Laurel. So thank you for putting your confidence in me, and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you very much, Director. Agenda Item Number Twelve is the Reappointment of Danny Selby as Director of Department of Fire, Marshal, and Permit Services. Mayor Sidnor, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Mr. Director Selby is one of our newest members here in the city, but he come from Montgomery County, retired fire captain, fire department, and fire services. Director Selby has done an outstanding job in the department, has a lot of things going on, getting our apartment back in code. So I'm very pleased with the work he's been doing in the city. So I ask for your confirmation, council. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. I will entertain a motion for reappointment of Danny Selby.
I motion to reappoint Danny Selby, Director of the Department of the Fire, Marshal, and Permit Services.
Thank you. I have a motion. Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Deloitte?
Uh, before I vote, I ha- I do have a, a, a quick comment on the reappointment of Danny Selby. Um, maybe I expect too much from department heads, but. When I pick up the phone, or when I send an email, or when I go up to City Hall to try to locate a department head. I expect them to be, uh, maybe, maybe it's expecting too much. I expect them to be readily available, but every. Department I've had, I've had that, uh, I tried to get a hold of. And some of these things with code enforcement need some very direct, uh, access to the department head. And I have gotten no responses from Danny Selby. I have nothing to complain about his work in the field. Because he's constantly out in the field doing inspections and stuff like that. But I do have a, I do have a problem with his leadership, and that's, that's. Uh, connecting with me, maybe, maybe the other council members have good connections with him. But I don't, and it's almost like he's ignoring me at time, and therefore I vote no.
Uh, Councilman Mills?
I don't have a vote for this.
Councilman Mills abstains?
Uh, President Cole?
Uh, I will gladly vote yes. Congratulations, Director Selby. Uh, would you like a few moments to speak?
Yes, um, thank you, Mayor Sidnor, Council President Cole, City Council members. I want to thank you for your support, and I look forward to working with you in the future many years to come. And, uh, look, it's a privilege to serve the City of Laurel. And thank you.
Thank you, Director. Our final appointment of the evening is agenda item number thirteen, appointment of Tim Miller, Director of Public Works. Mayor Sidnor, you have the floor.
Yes, I want to take another point of personal privilege before I go into, uh, Director Miller. And this is for all the council members, um, all the directors serve a discretion of the mayor. Uh, the city administrator and the deputy administrator is in charge of the directors when I'm, when I'm not present. So therefore, if you have any complaints about a director under my chain of command. Please forward those complaints to the city administrator, deputy city administrator. Um, any, no council member should be looking directly for any department head. I would put in place where we can have a chain of command. They can, city administrator, deputy city administrator can know what's going on. Cause they evaluate those department heads with time for evaluation. So if you're not keeping them in a loop of what's going on with that department head. They have no way to evaluate them, and I have no way to evaluate them as well. So in the future going forward. Uh, you shouldn't come down to City Hall looking directly for the council, uh, uh, director unless you go through. Um, the city administrator, deputy city administrator. They give you that, uh, okay, you go talk to that individual just because you have some checks and ballots in place. We wouldn't have any comments like this saying that we can't find our directors when we don't even know what's going on. I appreciate that on my can, on chain of command. That's why I want to do things. I really appreciate the council members, uh, follow my lead and help me out with that. So thank you, Mr. President. Going on, um, the next person we got here is, uh, Director, uh, Miller, Tim Miller, well, one of the directors, the council confirmed that. Mr. Miller come from us with a lot of experience from K C I, the engineer, um, met with Mr. Miller, uh, impressed all his work he's been on. He knows the city back and forth. Uh, he's gonna be a good asset to our city, and also he's a good asset to, uh, uh, D P W workers. He's gonna train our D P W workers up to the speed they need to be trained up to. And like I said before, it'd be a great asset to our city. So ask for your confirmation with council. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Do I have a motion to appoint? Tim Miller as Director of Department of Public Works?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Tim Miller as, uh, Director of Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Deloitte?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Um, I don't think Mr. Miller's here. Uh, he's on sick leave, but, Council, thank you for the confirmation of my, um, directors of the department. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, with no further business to come before the city council tonight, agenda item number fourteenth is adjournment. Uh, with that, I will see you all at the next work session on February seventh.